Okay, the Open Meeting Act is posted in the meeting room and is accessible to the members of the public. We actually have two meetings going on at the same time. We have two proclamations tonight, so we're going to first do the proclamations. Everybody here is welcome to stay, but after we present the proclamation, please feel free to leave if that's what you also desire. So, the first proclamation is the National Direct Support Professional Recognition Week, whereas the week of September 10, 2023, has been designated as National Direct Support Professional Recognition Week in order to celebrate and recognize professionals who provide support to millions of individuals with intellectual and developmental disabilities. And whereas this celebration recognizes the dedication and vital role of direct support professionals in enhancing the lives and protecting the well-being of individuals with disabilities of all ages. And whereas the community plays a role in lifting up direct support professionals as integral in supporting the needs of people with disabilities and their families through service systems across the United States. And whereas the goal of this city is to properly give recognition to those who directly help people with disabilities gain full access to housing, employment, and recreation activities which help create productive and satisfying lives and to live as independently as possible. Now therefore, I, Robert Morgan, Mayor of the City of Beatrice, Nebraska, do hereby proclaim the week of September 10, 2023, as Direct Support Professional Recognition Week in the City of Beatrice and call upon the citizens of Beatrice to observe the week with appropriate programs and activities. Furthermore, I encourage the citizens of Beatrice to seek information from those organizations with expertise in matters concerning professionals who support individuals with intellectual and developmental disabilities. Witness my hand and a seal of the City of Beatrice this fifth day of September 2023. And Amber, if you bring your folks up, I'll present this and we'll take a picture.
That sounds amazing. Thank you, Mayor. Okay, friends, let's get a photo.
Thank you so much for that.
Oh, not a problem. We'd like everyone together.
Well, where do you guys want?
Can we be together around?
Yeah, we can round the circle. Let's find a good picture. How are you?
Fine, thank you.
Yes. Nice to meet you. My mom.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. You need like...
Why don't you stand over here, right in the middle.
I'm... He's... He's a good kid. He's a good kid. He's Harvey's... Remember Harvey?
All right. All right, I enjoyed seeing you.
Thanks for the info.
The only thing is he mows yards on the side. He mows yards on the side. He does a really good job.
How's this?
Can I have a hug? Let's see. All right, there we go. On the count of three, we're gonna say B S D. Are you ready? One, two, three.
We'll bring my coat to me.
B S D. Stay right there.
What you guys are looking for.
Addie, wanna jump in? Nope. Yep. Come on, Addie. Chris, can you take one with Amber?
Did you read Colossals? Did you ever get them? He said, "Smile." Right there. Right there. He talked about how important it was to help weekends. Talked about how he was 20% of the share.
Thank you. Okay, do we have time for one word?
Sure. Being in the business, I mean, I thought it was...
I might end up doing one more.
People out there, assuming one, we want to go back to four.
Actually, Tracy, can you switch places?
Oh, you got like, can I have in?
Whether I get Dana, you may drop out on day six. It guarantees you either Friday and Saturday or a Saturday and Sunday and Friday. How many rotates those days?
One, two, three. B S D.
Mayor Morgan?
Thank you.
And so, never to be... Yeah, the paper.
He's shaking Bob's hand together. Keep shaking Bob's hand, telling him who he is.
So, that just pleased everybody.
Here.
Well, thank you.
Can you tell him, thank you? Tell Gary. Say, "Thank you."
Thank you, too.
Thank you. Thank you.
Oh, that's nice.
Maybe not.
All right, thank you.
I gotta get this coffee in here. Thank you so much.
Had to get the cheese shirt in there.
Yes. You know, I tell you, I did that 21 years ago. Good, how you doing today?
Thank you very much.
Who doesn't like presents?
Thank you very, very much.
One day...
Phil, do you wanna hand one out, too? Do you wanna hand one out, too?
Thank you so much.
So, next week, we're gonna get a house crisis all week and feature our direct support on our social media.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
On our social media and then at our campus and on our community services.
Do you wanna come? Tell me now.
Okay.
Great.
It's always a deal. Thank you, sir.
Can you take that back to...
Thank you. See you, Phil.
All right. Thank you.
See you, Phil.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys. Thanks for coming. See you later.
Not for you. Phil.
Would you like it?
I'd like it.
It's yours.
Happy reading.
You're getting good work.
You can fall asleep at night with that.
I do. Tell me to say, "I will."
He used to play basketball when I was in J.C. That's three years ago.
Phil? Thirty years.
Only thirty?
No reason to.
At least. Used to have to age out, so he was, you know, young men thing.
Okay, our second proclamation is the Big Give Gage Day, September 14, 2023. Whereas Big Give Gage was established as a local day of giving, and whereas the Gage County Foundation has established Big Give Gage in the celebration of philanthropy and volunteerism, where people give whatever is meaningful to them. And whereas Big Give Gage is a day where citizens work together to share commitments, rally for causes, build a stronger community, and think about other people. And whereas it is fitting and proper during Big Give Gage and on every day to recognize a tremendous impact philanthropy, volunteerism, and community service do for the City of Beatrice. Now therefore, I, Robert Morgan, Mayor of the City of Beatrice, do hereby proclaim September 14, 2023, to be Big Give Gage Day in Beatrice and urge all citizens of Beatrice to recognize the tradition of philanthropy as it continues to improve and enhance the lives of all by promoting the common good. Witness my hand and official seal of the City of Beatrice this fifth day of September 2023. Mr. Petrowski?
No B-Rock gifts.
Don, we got these before, so...
Yeah, they handed out presents. You know, that's nicer than anything BSDC ever gave me.
Can we pull that door shut?
Phil, he's wound up, isn't he?
Good evening, Mayor and Councilman. Don Petrowski, President of the Gage County Foundation, just want to take a minute to thank you for this proclamation. The Big Give is very close to my heart, and it's just an honor to be here. And I want to bring you up to date. This year is, we are fifth year, and we have 72 nonprofit organizations. We started with 42 five years ago, and we have numerous sponsors this year. And a lot of this credit goes to Shelby Watson, the Director of the Hospital Foundations, working with us, and she's kind of co-chairing this along with my wife, Verdella, and they have done an excellent job, and I just can't say enough for all their efforts. One thing I want to stress, too, is that the Big Give, I'm proud of our foundation board. We budget for the Big Give, and there is no administrative fees that are assessed in this Big Give. Every money, all the money donated to all of these 72 organizations and nonprofits will be returned to them for the value that they show that they have received. Again, we budgeted for all of this, so there's no administration fees, and just happy that the board is able to do this. And over the past four years, we have raised over $1.1 million for those efforts. And what that has done for the city and the county is undescribable. And this year, bigger and greater things will happen because we, again, we've increased our membership with the nonprofits. But a lot of this just takes a lot of team effort, teamwork, and with the Mayor and the Council, with the support of the city, that is part of that teamwork, and I thank you for that. And with that, we're nine days away, September 14. Come onboard. BigGiveGage.org is the website. Find out and participate if you so wish. But again, thank you for the proclamation, and everyone have a good evening. Thank you.
Don, wait. Mayor, can I? Okay. Thank you for your leadership and all that. I've enjoyed working with you on different things with that, but we couldn't have done it without your leadership, so I appreciate your leadership, so does everybody in the county, number one. Number two, you guys would not know this, but the past executive... That's not her title. What's Shelby's title?
Oh, she's a...
Senior Executive.
She's the Director of the Foundation.
Yep. Anyway, she, her predecessor left. She came on at almost exactly the wrong time for this because we were really in the middle of doing it, and Verdella came out of the blue. God helped us there, I think, and she has just done a wonderful job. Would take no money for anything that she's done there, and hopefully will surpass everything that we've been able to deane in the last couple of years, but please pass that on to her that she needs to have... Shelby does, too, but Verdella has really stepped up, so it's really good.
It's worked out well for what Shelby is able to do, what she's comfortable with. Verdella is able to do what she's comfortable with. So, it's been a good working relationship with the Hospital Foundation and with the hospital, too, because we've done this now. This will be our fifth year working together, and it just, I'm just proud that both foundations are coming together like this and for a good cause, because, again, the community in Gage County benefits from this. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, we're going to go into recess for the City Council. I now call the Boswa meeting to order. Once again, the Open Meetings Act is posted on the wall in the meeting room and is accessible to members of the public. First item is consent agenda. Approve agenda as submitted. Receive and place on file all notices pertaining to this meeting. Receive and place on file all materials having any bearing on this meeting. An approval of minutes of regular meeting on August 29, 2022 is on file by the City Clerk's Office. Anybody want anything pulled off? If not, Mr. McLean.
I move the items listed under the consent agenda be approved, accepted, and/or ratified as presented.
Second.
Everybody, your vote, please. Okay.
Well, you get a vote this time.
What's that?
You get a vote.
Oh. All right.
Eddie gets a vote.
Okay.
Yes.
Good. All right. First thing we'll do is a public hearing on the proposed fiscal year 2024, 2025 biennial budget.
Give me a minute here, and I'll try to pull it up, so everybody has a chance to look at it. All right, so if you look at, I started with page two of your budget that you have there. You can see the revenues on Boswa there. You can see this year, we figure we're in about $2.2 million. What we budgeted for next year is about 1.9, just a little under that, and then the following year is a little higher, but obviously you're looking to issue bonds in FY '25. A couple of things that are different for next budget year, FY '24, than you've had this year. One, you'll see your gate fees are down at the C and D site. That has to do with the fact that you basically re-roofed almost every house in the City of Beatrice in the last year, and so all those run through the C and D site. We don't anticipate that, again, happening next year, so we bumped down the gate fee charges for FY '24 and FY '25 back to where they have kind of been on average over the last couple of years. You see the Beatrice service fees, you see that going down to zero. That was a fee that was carried over back when sanitation, sanitary garbage existed, and so now that Mars pays a straight fee based upon the tonnage that they take across the scale, this was essentially double paying Boswa for those fees, and so we have worked on eliminating that fee over the last couple of years, and so it goes to zero in FY '24 and FY '25. And then the big change there in the miscellaneous revenue, you see $131,000 in FY '22, another $131,000 in FY '23. That was insurance proceeds for storm damage. And so, again, we don't anticipate that the next couple of years. That's why you see that going back down to that $500 mark. And then debt proceeds, you see in FY '25 being that $5.9 million of bond issuance is what we're looking at there. So, other than that, the revenues were pretty consistent year over year on, for Boswa. You look at operating expenses on the next page. Operating expenses for FY '24, we have them estimated to go up about 1.5% from where we think this year will end, and another 1.7% the following year. So, very minimal changes on the operating side of things, really no changes in how they're operating out there. When you go to capital expenditures is where you see Boswa having some expenses in the upcoming years. One thing to note in FY '24, capital construction of $545,000, that's what we're anticipating engineering fees to be for the new landfill. And so, we'll look to see that site or that bill come through here in the next, start in the next couple of months. You'll see a task order come forward, oh, probably around Christmas time sometime, to get them started on really heavily into design work there. And then in FY '25, you see some machinery and equipment, and you see capital construction. We're looking, we're proposing at this point to look to buy some new equipment out there with the bond issuance while you also then start the construction of the new landfill cell in FY '25. One thing we're looking at doing in FY '24 is rather than making a contribution to our post-closure fund, is using that cash to pay for the engineering fees, so you do not have to pay, issue a bond in FY '24 for the engineering fees. You simply use the cash that you have, and then you see in FY '25, you make a larger contribution back to your post-closure fund to make up for what you did not put in in FY '24. Outside of that, any questions anybody has on Boswa's budget?
Tobias. When do you anticipate the new landfill actually being operational?
Talking to the engineer the other day, they're looking to start design, final design this winter, look to bid it next October, so October 24. And then with some construction occurring over the wintertime, most of it occurring in next spring, and then being open in that June, July, August time period of '25.
Any other questions? If not, Mr. McLean?
I move that the public hearing be closed at 7:19 PM.
Second. Okay. Gentlemen, your vote, please. Okay, and that passes. We have a resolution. Resolution number 68, executing task order number 20 for the engineering owner agreement between Boswa and Burns McDonald Engineering Company Incorporated for professional services including air emissions reporting, groundwater monitoring and reporting and miscellaneous services.
I move the resolution number 68 be passed and adopted.
Second.
So, every year what we do with Burns and Mac is we have them come up with a task order, what they're looking to do for that next year, have it come before this board, have you approve it, that's the way they work on. This one really is just for the day-to-day operations and stuff you need to do, the emissions reporting, the groundwater monitoring, those types of things that we have to submit. Whether it's monthly, quarterly, or semi-annually, kind of depends on what particular report it is. This contract is for an amount not to exceed $46,000, so they'll bill you by the hour, and if they go over that amount, they have to stop, come talk to us, and we have to give them another authorization for additional funds. Like I said, you'll have another task order coming here in six months or so for the new landfill.
Any discussion? Seeing none. Your vote, please. And that passes as well. Okay. No ordinances? Anybody here for the public forum for the Boswa meeting? Seeing none. We'll move into discussion reports. First item and only item is approval of fiscal year 2024, 2025 biennial budget.
I move the proposed budget for distributions for fiscal year 2022 in the amount of $2,128,108 and the proposed budget of distributions for fiscal year 2023 in the amount of $7,505,284 be approved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded?
It should read for FY '24 and FY '25, not '22 and '23.
I kind of wondered about that, but that's what was written, sorry.
Nope. You would have been correct, I'm making that correction, so...
All right. Seeing no discussion, gentlemen, your vote, please. And that passes as well. Okay. Now I'll make a motion. Somebody make a motion.
I move that the meeting be adjourned at 7:22 PM.
Second.
Your vote, please. And that passes. Boswa meeting is over, and we will proceed to call back to order the regular-held City Council meeting. Thank you for coming in. Welcome to stay. I knew the answer. Okay. We'll do the consent agenda. Approve agenda as submitted. Receive and place on file all notices pertaining to this meeting. Receive and place on file all materials having any bearing on this meeting. Approval of minutes of work session meeting on August 21, 2023 is on file with the City Clerk's Office. Approval of the minutes of regular meeting on August 21, 2023 is on file with the City Clerk's Office. Approval of minutes of the special meeting on August 28, 2023 is on file with the City Clerk's Office. Approval of Treasury Report of Claims, the amount of $318,566.33. Approval of the Boswa Report of Claims, the amount of $112,825.13. Approval of Pay Request number nine, in the amount of $373,553.20 to 3FI Incorporated for the June 2022 hailstorm as recommended by the Board of Public Works. Approval of Change Order number one, decrease in the amount of $869.28, and a final pay request in the amount of $69,999.86 to RL Team and Construction Incorporated for the alley reconstruction, 8th Street to 9th Street between Court and Market Streets, 2023 project as recommended by the Board of Public Works. Approval of Pay Request number five to Myers Construction Incorporated in the amount of $421,135.61 for the water main replacement project as part of the 2021 Water SRF projects as recommended by the Board of Public Works. And item L, resolution number 7119, adopting the 2023 Downtown Revitalization Program Guidelines. Anybody want anything pulled off?
The last one, L.
Okay. Anybody else? If not, Mr. McLean.
I move the items listed under the consent agenda, with the exception of item L, be approved, accepted, and ratified as presented.
Second.
Your vote, please. That passes. Eight, zero.
I move that item L on the consent agenda be approved, accepted, and ratified as presented.
Second.
I don't have any problem with it. I have had some people concerned, and so I would like to have it just talked about exactly what this is. I've had people thinking that we're running through some plans for the new bypass and the city deal here on this, and tried to explain to them one, but so I'd like to have Tobias just, you know, explain what this actually is.
Sure. So, the City of Beatrice is applying for another downtown revitalization grant. We've had a couple of them, so the first one we got, we redid Fish Street with. The second one, we did some facades in the downtown. We currently have one going on with additional facades in the downtown. DED kind of changes their rules as we go through this, and so like we did for the last downtown revitalization grant, this one, DED is requiring us to adopt some guidelines, and they basically just set forth what the rules are to get the grant money should you choose to go forward with that particular project. If you read through the guidelines, it talks about who are eligible and what are eligible improvements, brick and masonry repair, replacement of awnings and signs, exterior wall repairs, those types of things are listed in here as far as what are eligible improvements. It talks about what are ineligible improvements. Again, these are set by the state. These aren't necessarily the ones that we would select, but they're ones the state has. It talks about interior improvements, roof and gutter, those types of things are not allowed by the state this time. And then it goes through, and it talks about how each participant has to put a 25% match in. It talks about how, what the maximum amount of the grant award would be, and we said it's on case-by-case basis. We're looking to get $400,000. So, those are the types of things that are laid out in these programs. So, again, they only are applicable if you decide to apply for the grant and if you decide to proceed with the grant funding.
Gilbert?
Gilbert. Thank you.
Perfect. Any other discussion? If not, your vote, please. That passes eight, zero. Okay, the next one is we will open a public hearing to set the fiscal 2024 final property tax request.
Yes, so final property tax request, public hearing. I was pulling the numbers up here. So, what you see is our property tax request for FY '23 is $3246,140 is what we are requesting for this next year. As we talked about, the tax rate itself is 3.55031. You'll have a resolution come later, an ordinance to talk about how to set that one, but that is our property tax request for the upcoming fiscal year.
Discussion. Seeing no discussion. Mr. McLean?
I move the public hearing be closed at 7:28 PM.
Second.
Your vote, please. That passes eight, zero. We have another public hearing for the consideration of the acquisition of real property from Larry Gearing, described as follows. The west half of Lot 3, Block 64, Beatrice's original town, now City of Beatrice, Gage County, Nebraska, commonly known as 413 Court Street. Hearing is now open.
So, many of you are probably familiar with this particular building, but this is the old Barber Building that was in downtown Beatrice. It was dilapidated, the city condemned it, the city ultimately tore it down. We expended about $386,000 in that total demolition cost. We looked to recoup our money from the owner of the property, that means Mr. Larry Gearing. As part of that process, he's agreed to give the property to the City of Beatrice, and so what you have before you tonight is a donation agreement for him to donate the property to the City of Beatrice, and then we'll deduct that from part of what he owes us. He also has agreed to turn over a couple of vehicles that he has in his yard and a few other items, but we'll continue to work on collecting our money from him.
What are we showing him for a value of this donation?
in the amount of $421,135.61 for the water main replacement project as part of the 2021 Water SRF projects as recommended by the Board of Public Works, and Item L, Resolution Number 7119, adopting the 2023 Downtown Revitalization Program Guidelines. Anybody want anything pulled off?
The last one now.
Okay. Anybody else? If not, Mr. McLean.
I move the items listed in the consent agenda, with the exception of Item L, be approved, accepted, and ratified as presented.
Second.
Your vote, please. That passes. Eight, zero.
I move that Item L on a consent agenda be approved, accepted, and ratified as presented.
Second.
I don't have any problem with it. I have had some people concerned, and so I would like to have just talked about exactly what this is. I've had people thinking that we're running through some plans for the new bypass and the city deal here on this, and tried to explain to them one, but so I'd like to have Tobias just, you know, explain what this actually is.
Sure. So the city Beatrice is applying for another downtown revitalization grant. We've had a couple of them, so the first one we got, we redid Fish Street with, the second one, we did some facades in the downtown. We currently have one going on with additional facades in the downtown. DED kind of changes their rules as we go through this, and so like we did for the last downtown revitalization grant, this one, DED is requiring us to adopt some guidelines, and they basically just set forth what the rules are to get the grant money, should you choose to go forward with that particular project. If you read through the guidelines, it talks about who are eligible and what are eligible improvements, brick and masonry repair, replacement of awnings and signs, exterior wall repairs, those types of things are listed in here as far as what are eligible improvements. It talks about what are ineligible improvements. Again, these are set by the state, these aren't necessarily the ones that we would select, but they're ones the state has. It talks about interior improvements, roof and gutter, those types of things are not allowed by the state this time. And then it goes through, and it talks about how each participant has to put a 25% match in, it talks about how, what the maximum amount of the grant award would be, and we said it's on case-by-case basis. We're looking to get $400,000. So those are the types of things that are laid out in these programs, so again, they only are applicable if you decide to apply for the grant and if you decide to proceed with the grant funding.
Cover it.
Cover it.
Perfect. Any other discussion? If not, your vote, please. That passes eight, zero. Okay, the next one is we will open a public hearing to set the fiscal 2024 final property tax request.
Uh, yes, so final property tax request, public hearing, I was pulling the numbers up here. So what you see is our property tax request for FY '23 is $3,246,140 is what we are requesting for this next year. As we talked about, the tax rate itself is 3.55031. You'll have a resolution come later, an ordinance to talk about how to set that one, but that is our property tax request for the upcoming fiscal year.
Discussion. Seeing no discussion. Mr. McLean.
I move that the public hearing be closed at 7:28 PM.
Second.
Your vote, please. That passes eight, zero. We have another public hearing for the consideration of the acquisition of real property from Larry Gearing, described as follows, the west half of Lot 3, Block 64, Beatrice original town, now city of Beatrice, Gage County, Nebraska, commonly known as 413 Court Street. Hearing is now open.
So many of you are probably familiar with this particular building, but this is the old Barber Building that was in downtown Beatrice. It was dilapidated, the city condemned it, the city ultimately tore it down. We expended about $386,000 in that total demolition cost. We looked to recoup our money from the owner of the property, that means Mr. Larry Gearing. As part of that process, he's agreed to give the property to the city Beatrice, and so what you have before each and I is a donation agreement for him to donate the property to the city Beatrice, and then we'll deduct that from part of what he owes us. He also has agreed to turn over a couple of vehicles that he has in his yard and a few other items, but we'll continue to work on collecting our money from him.
What are we showing him for a value of this donation?
I believe it's $8,750, which is the assessed value of the property.
I might have missed out somewhere.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, Mr. McLean.
I move that the public hearing be closed at 7:30 PM.
Second.
Your vote, please. That passes eight, zero. So we'll follow it up with the Resolution Number 7120, executing the contract for donation of real estate and all necessary documents to acquire real estate from Larry Gearing.
I move the Resolution Number 7120 be passed and adopted.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Do we need any more discussion?
The only guy I would note on this, it's the property that keeps giving, there are some back taxes that are owed on it, so we will pay those off to make sure we have a good title to the property as well. But at this point, you're just got to keep getting it cleaned up.
What are we going to do with a couple of old cars?
We are going to take them down and salvage them and take whatever the salvage value on them is.
Unless you'd like to buy them, Rich.
No.
Okay.
Too bad PD ain't still alive, he couldn't get them for us for nothing.
Any other discussion? If not, your vote, please. That passes eight, zero. Next resolution is Resolution Number 7121, executing the naming rights and sponsorships for professional services agreement between the city and Sportsman Solutions LLC for consulting services related to evaluating and securing supplemental funding and private revenue streams via naming rights and sponsorships in the city.
I move the Resolution Number 7121 be passed and adopted.
Second.
So we've had a concept or master plan done for Hannibal Park, we've been working through making those improvements out there, and then we were presented with the opportunity here to partner with Sportsman Solutions. They're basically a fundraising organization, and what they do, they go out and try to see who they can find to help sponsor different parts of the park out there to help us raise funds. As part of the contract is they would keep 30% of whatever they fundraise, and so if they fundraised zero, we owed them nothing. So the proposal for each and I is a one-year contract with them to go out and see what they can do to help us fundraise some money to complete the improvements out at that park, which would then allow us to, A, get the park done, and then B, use the dollars we have been using out of the lodging tax to go do some other projects here in the community.
Do we know anything about their history? Have they successfully done this in many other towns?
They have, they've got a quite portfolio, if you look on their website, of other facilities that they've been involved with and had some good luck with, and I don't think they would take this on if they didn't think they could do it here in Beatrice. Again, because they don't get paid any money unless they are able to collect some money, and so it's not in their best interest just to take on a wild card, so.
So they just got one park in mind that they're working on, Hannibal, because in here it says naming rights and sponsorships in the city, so.
Right, so what we did in the contracts, I made sure they named Hannibal Park in there, so it was clear that it was Hannibal that they're working on. If we wish to retain them for other parks, we may do that in the future, but we want to make sure it was clear that it was just Hannibal at this time.
Sure, everything's Hannibal.
Absolutely.
Any further discussion? If not, your vote, please. And that passes eight, zero. Resolution Number 7122, executing a subordination agreement with LMRLR LLC and Rob L. Ruskamp and Leanne M. Ruskamp and Nebraska Bank to subordinate the security interests of the city to the superior indebtedness to Nebraska Bank.
I move the Resolution Number 7122 be passed and adopted.
Second.
You are having a bit of deja vu, we did have this on the agenda here a couple weeks ago, but their bank has approached us and they would like to increase the amount of subordination. Last time we did it for $122,000, the bank would ask us to increase it to $155,000. We would still have a second position on their main primary residence, which is located just northeast of the community, and an additional, I believe it's 25 acres that surround their house. When you look at the numbers, I believe you still have adequate collateral and security to secure your loan that you have outstanding. They have paid off their CDBG revolving loan fund, that has been paid off, and they have one more year remaining on the LBA 40 loan of about $30,000, $31,000 remaining on that balance.
Discussion. Seeing none, your vote, please. That passes eight, zero. Okay. Moving on to ordinances, ordinance amending section 17181 through 17187 inclusive, amending Division 2 of Article 8 and Chapter 17, amending section 17201 through 17205 inclusive, repealing Division 3 of Article 8, Chapter 17, including section 17206 through 17209, inclusive the city code relating to nuisances.
Mike, just a minute, I believe if I remember right, the Coast Committee talked about reading this one time tonight and then bringing it back, so we'll just read it by title one time tonight.
Okay.
So if you just want to make a motion, read it by title one time tonight, and then we'll.
I move that said ordinance be given number 23-104, the title therefore be approved, the rules be suspended.
Nope, we're just going to read it by title one time tonight.
Orders be approved by one, read only one time tonight, okay?
Second.
So remember, most time we suspend the rules and we pass it all one time, the Coast Committee asked that we slow this one down, and we talked about once tonight, gives opportunity for you guys to discuss it, gives opportunity for the public then, in case they hear about it afterwards, to come back up and bring some comments to us again, so that's the reason why we did hear you last time, got slowing some ordinances down, so this is one that we can do, so that's what we're doing. Going, looking at the ordinance itself, again, the Coast Committee's looked at it several times, Garrett kind of hit some highlights and then turned over to you since it's your committee, but really what we kind of did is we tried to clean this thing up. If you look through the old ordinance sections on nuisance properties, which you saw, they're kind of strung out of some different places, weeds were listed two or three times and some different things, and so we tried to clean them up and make them a little more easier to understand, kind of flow through things like the junk vehicles kind of do, how you go from what is a violation to how do you get noticed, to how do you appeal, kind of just walk you through that process is what we've done through there. Substantively, not a lot of changes in here from what was before, I mean, what was a weed before is still a weed, what was a violation before is still a violation, but we just tried to tighten up a few things and make it a little cleaner.
Well, I want to thank the committee for working with us on this, and Tobias and Bob, it's the first step in a long process, but one thing that we learned in the discussion of all this, when we talked with our city attorney, we found out that there's only some things you can do and many you can't. People have rights when it comes to their property, we thought we could do some things, we did the best we could do with what the law allows us to do. We talked about enforcement of it, and I think Chet and Nick have done, have stepped it up to getting a lot more action done, and they seem to be working on a lot of the problem properties, so we did the best we could do. We can always, between now and when we read it the second time, if anybody has any suggestions or want to change something, we can sure do it at that time. So that's about it, and we'll move on to the nuisance vehicles after this, or the problem vehicles.
Discussion.
Did you shorten down the timeframe on any of it, Gary?
Some of it you can't.
I mean, I, you only know some of it you can't. I read through there, and I could see where you crossed some stuff out, you know, some of it was eliminated, and I, but it didn't seem to me that there was a, there wasn't really any wholesale changes, and, and my complaint has always been the length of time that we give people to adhere to the city ordinances.
I brought that question up in committee, Ted.
Okay.
Tobias explained it to me rather well, like they have five days to comply, but you have to serve them with a piece of paper.
Yep.
And if you can't find them, it just keeps stretching and stretching until you get paper to them personally.
Yep.
And sometimes it goes to a month, two months before, some people don't live here in town, and it's, we shortened up the best we could, but there are some things that's just beyond our control.
Yeah. Like, and I know it's not part of the ordinance, and I know it's part of what Chet does, but, you know, like some of the weeds and things like that, sometimes we just go mow it. If they've already been notified, they've already ignored it, the next time around, we just go and do it, and I just didn't know if that, and I, as I read through that, I didn't know if there was a, if it shortened down for the second or third or fourth or fifth or hundredth offense, if their notification that that changed it, or if you changed any of that, or if you can change it by statute, but I would have, I would have liked to seen that. Once, once they become derelict, or once they become a problem, we shouldn't have to go through the same hoops that we have to go through the first time around, but that was, but if it's by statute, it's by statute, I get that.
So what we have in here, if it's a nuisance violation, once you've been notified, that notice carries for a full year, so we don't have to re-notice you, so if you move it aside and come back out the next day, we don't start the clock over again, but with weeds, we do start the clock over.
Yeah, because weeds grow.
Right. I will tell you that there are some properties that after the first time, and we know that we have one that we know is deceased and they're not going to mow it, and so it just kind of gets put on the mowing list, and we kind of just take care of it and try to find other ways to take care of the property and acquire it.
Yep. Okay.
We even had a big conversation of how tall the weeds are supposed to get, some of us wanted to break it down.
Yeah, I'm with you.
But.
Okay.
The bottom line.
Thank you, thank you for all of you guys that are on that, thank you for all of your work on that, that's.
The bottom line is, Ted, you can't legislate pride in any property.
I, you.
Think I've heard you say that.
You have heard me say that repeatedly, you can't legislate community pride, absolutely.
We're open to any suggestions between now and the next reading.
One thing to also note is that this doesn't just apply to the city limits, it has a two-mile radius outside of the corporate city limits, which involves quite a few properties that I would guess that Chet and Nick are going to be real busy on here shortly.
Any discussion from the public? And I appreciate the committee having us read this only one time tonight, I think that's a good move, so as people want to reread that and they have questions, please let councilmen know, and we can move forward. No more discussion for the first vote out of three. Your vote, please. And that passes eight, zero. Okay. Next ordinance is adopting the Biennial Appropriations Bill for fiscal 2024 and 2025. If the, see here, a motion to suspend the rules is not debatable.
I move that said ordinance be given number 23-25, the title there be approved, the rules be suspended, and that said ordinance be read by number only three times tonight.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, your vote, please, and that passes eight, zero.
Yeah.
Ordinance number 2325 by number only the first time, 2025 by number the second time, and 2325 for the third and final time.
I move that ordinance number 23-25 be passed and approved.
Second.
Uh, this is what we learned over a couple weeks ago, so at this point, if you guys have any questions, we happen to answer them for other questions.
All right, your vote, please. That passes eight, zero. Okay.
You're at the bottom.
Yep. Just go ahead and make the motion then. I move to increase the total restricted funds authority for the fiscal year beginning October 1st, 2023, and ending September 30th, 2024 by an additional 1% as authorized in the Section 13-519 of the Nebraska revised statutes.
Second.
Okay.
Coming up, Ms. Hannah, you can explain this one.
Um, so I thought this would be a good opportunity to go over the restricted funds authority, just since we have a few that maybe haven't seen this one before. There's a couple, there's two different things that state statute limits the amount of revenue that we're able to generate, so one of those is your property tax, and that's limited with the levy, the amount of levy that you can set. The other one that we have is our restricted fund authority. So those are revenues like your property taxes, sales tax, any of our local option sales tax, and so that state statute says that we can only generate so much revenue within those categories. So the 1% that you're voting on tonight is just saying that we are able to increase that, we automatically get 2.5% per the state, and then you're voting to give us another 1%. I wanted to clarify that the number doesn't increase property taxes in any way, it's not us saying that we're going to spend more money, it's just giving us the opportunity that if we would need to, that we have those funds available, and that is something that the state always recommends, that we continue to take that additional 1% on that number.
And we've done this time and time again.
Yep, yeah.
Mayor, as long as she's here, can I have like 30 seconds?
As long as it pertains to this.
Budget?
No, it pertains to this particular item.
I'm not sure, we got 14 different budget things here, so I'm not really sure, you tell me when I can talk, okay, and I'll do it, whenever you want me to, whenever you want me to.
Because this one, I think, I'm, I think I'm correct, this is, we have to address this particular item. Okay. Any other discussion? Gentlemen, your vote, please. Okay. That passes. Eight, zero. Okay, Resolution Number 7123, setting the property tax request for the city of Beatrice for fiscal 2024.
I move that Resolution Number 7123 be passed and adopted.
Second.
So we had the hearing earlier, this is the resolution to do it, so again, we're setting our property tax request for FY '24 at $3,246,140. That's what you're requesting, and then the next, then that sets your property tax levy at .355031.
Terry, let's try to squeeze your question in here.
Okay. Honestly, Mayor, it's not like a question.
Okay.
This budget process is a huge process, and I just want to thank you for the job you did. I think, I think you did, you put together a really, really good budget, and I'm sure speaking for all of us that we'd like you to thank the department heads for all the work that they did for it, and you guys putting, asking them to put together eight years' worth of estimations had to be a pretty interesting thing for them to do, I can kind of imagine that activity, but I appreciate that, and I'm sure everybody else does too. And kind of lastly, I was thinking last night that mayors and councils go, maybe not as soon as we want them to go, I don't know, mayors and councils come and go, but, but city administrators don't go that often, and some of you that have had tenure here longer than I have, by a long shot, have told me that not that many years ago, we have, things wouldn't have gone right, we maybe would have had to borrow money to actually make payroll in this city, and we've gone from that, and prior mayors and city councils should be congratulated on getting us from where we were to where we are, but Tobias, I want to congratulate you for doing this also, because you've been the guy that kind of stuck the whole thing together, and, and we've gone from what I just described to, if you noticed, noticed the handouts we got, excuse me, like two weeks ago, very little debt and a very good cash position, and I think you had a hell of a lot to do with that, Tobias, and I don't think you get enough recognition for that, so I appreciate you doing that.
Thank you, Terry.
Okay. But, and then I'll shut up, but we're not done, right? Right, Mayor, we're not done here.
We're not done, no, but again, I think the department heads, Hannah, Tobias, did a really good job.
I was going to say something to Hannah when she was here, but Hannah, I'm sorry, I didn't say it, thank you for the time you spent with me too, I know I didn't make it easy on you, but, but I appreciate all the time you spent with the answering the questions and stuff, thank you. Yep.
Yeah, it's not easy, it takes some time, so thank you very much. Further discussion? Your vote, please. That passes eight, zero. Resolution Number 7124, calculating the amount of unused restricted funds authority.
I move the Resolution Number 7124 be passed and adopted.
Second.
Those were Hannah just up and talking about, so if you have any more questions, should we have to come up and talk to you some more about restricted funds?
All right, seeing none, your vote, please. That passes eight, zero. Okay. Public forum, the purpose of the public forum is for the presentation of an item by the general public to the city council for consideration later date. No discussion or action will be taken by the city council at this time. Anybody here for the public forum? by the city council at this time. Anybody here for the public forum? Come on up and state your name and address, please. Thank you.
Margaret Hayth, one oh four West Branville. I wanted to speak at the last meeting, but unfortunately, we couldn't stay for it. So I'm wanting to address the meeting that happened a month ago. So I hope that's okay that I comment. I wanted to start with saying kudos to you, Mayor Morgan, for finally bringing to a vote that Court Street Corridor project. Talking, talking, talking does not get anything done. And I also want to commend all of you council members that voted yes. I know you took a lot of criticism that night, but without voting yes, the thing's dead in the water. It can't proceed. So they can at least look at it to see whether this thing's even going to be doable or not. Also, Mr. Kerr stepped out, but I wanted to thank him for his no vote. I do understand where he came from with that, because quite honestly, when I first heard about this project, I hadn't seen any of the previous plans. So I automatically jumped to the conclusion that they were going to use the existing one ways and split the highway. So after Mr. Kerr, um, had voted no, that next day I got in my car and I drove the truck routes. So west on Ella, back east on Market. And after doing that, I could see where having Ella remain as the one-way or part of the highway, that was just not going to be possible. It's got the First Christian Church. It's got two banks. The old building on the corner of Sixth and Ella that it's recently been sold and they're fixing it up. There's a lot of prosperous businesses and room, possibilities for more businesses in that area. So, no. And back, you know, thinking back to when I was a kid and would go downtown, downtown was not just Court Street. Downtown was Court and Ella. Even back then, unless you were buying a car, there wasn't a whole heck of a lot of business on, on Market Street. So, yes, I can, I can understand why he voted that way, but I really do think that's the right way to go. So with that said, I do have one, and this is a question. So from what I understand, there is no money for this project in the budget for the next two years. So my question is, then, does this mean if there's no money, this cannot go on to the next phase? That it's just going to sit there for two years until there is money?
Can't answer during public.
Okay.
Forum, but I can tell you that there are some other things in the works that we're looking at.
Okay. All right. Well, that's when I read that, I just was a little bit concerned that, you know, we've gotten this far with it. So let's just, don't stop it right now. So, and then, last but not least, again, I wasn't sure whether to bring this up or not, but I heard it in the meeting that night, and I think more than one person said it. I'm, I'm getting tired of hearing people that keep blaming this city council for building that new elementary school. Had they been here, or at least watched it on TV, the night of the city council meeting, when Mr. Alexander was here speaking to the city council, several of you spoke up and said, you did not, you weren't happy with this at all in the way they handled it. So I can just say for those people that want to blame the city council, no, they're barking at the wrong people. They should have voted in different members on that school board. So that's who they need to be blaming, not the city council. So with that, thank you, thank you, thank you for serving on this council, because I know this is not an easy job, you guys. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay. We will move on to discussions and reports. Chet is up first with Community Development Department overview.
Good evening, Chet McGurrie. I'm your Community Development Director. Um, I've been with Community Development for six years, four months. Um, I came in under Rob Marrow, who hired me, uh, for code enforcement. Um, and I've worked that area for six years. Uh, Rob departed in January, um, and I decided I'll step up to keep some continuity in what we've kind of built. Um, so I've kind of stepped aside on that, on the code enforcement part. Um, and we've hired, uh, Nick Padani. He's been with me a year and four months. So he's, he's kind of still getting into his, his role a little more. Um, when we hired him, um, we were going to split duties between he and I, both being, uh, code enforcement. And we would split duties, kind of split the town, um, and both handle that and then spend time at the desk instead of having an administrative assistant. Um, then Rob departed. Um, we were back down to two people in the office again. Um, in the midst of that, we had the hailstorm in June, um, which kind of taxed us a little bit. Um, being out doing code enforcement, we were stuck in processing permits most of the time. So, in May, we brought Hannah Bradney in, uh, as our admin assistant. Um, she needs to be our, our fourth administrative assistant in four years. Um, that's a tough position. She's the front desk. Um, she handles the complaint calls, um, and a lot of the venom from the public when they're not happy with us. Um, so that job tends to burn people out. Um, but she's doing well. Uh, she has a good personality. She handles stuff well and, and lets things kind of roll off. Um, and she's well organized, um, keeping us two knuckleheads on task and where we're supposed to be, when we're supposed to be there. Um, Community Development Department, um, everything starts with us that's being built in town. Um, we, somebody comes in with the idea, I want to build this house. We do the plan review, make sure their site's right. They get everything, um, uh, laid out right, and, uh, we okay the permits. Um, we'll, I handle the inspections from footings up to the top. So from concrete to the final inspection, uh, before occupancy is allowed. Um, I know a few of you are familiar with code enforcement a little bit. I talked to a few of you quite a bit, some not so much. But, um, my philosophy on the code enforcement, we like to be proactive, um, and be out on the streets. Nick's out every day. Um, he'll hit a section of town, um, and process whatever code violations he finds there. Could be ten or twelve a day, sometimes twenty. Um, uh, we try to, we handle the complaints in between all that stuff. A lot of the complaints come in, we've, we've probably already, are already working that, those cases, um, just because of our proactive stance on things. We're kind of limited, as Gary was saying, uh, about, uh, what we can do with cases and how long it takes to do things. Um, we're bound by the same parameters as law enforcement, First Amendment, Fourth Amendment, uh, search and seizure. So we can't just, we get, can't get a complaint. We just can't go on and take somebody's property. Um, we have to go through the process. We have to determine if it's a violation, if it fits the code. Again, you've got personal taste. You know, the mayor may like penguin statues, and he's got thirty of them in his front yard. Uh, I, not my thing, but not much I can do about it. He, he has the right to have those penguins in his yard. Um, and again, conflict of personal standards. Uh, I can't legislate. Some people just don't care. You know, we, we hit them over the head over and over again, and we're back in a week or two to, to do the same thing, to handle the same thing. So code enforcement's, uh, it's, it's an interesting field. Um, zoning.
Can I stop you there, though?
Yeah.
So some people, you have to go back over and over. So do you wait until you get a second complaint, or you just put it on the counter to go back in two weeks?
We'll roll through those.
Because in theory, because I've been told over and over and over that, that we collectively as a city don't do anything until somebody complains. So until a neighbor complains or somebody complains, but once they made a complaint, and you know this, they're a problem child, do you wait for another complaint, or do you just go back in a couple?
No, we, we, well, like weeds, we know they don't mow every week. Um, you know, the, the summer, it's, it takes about two weeks and you're back to twelve inches again. So we're back, you know, and in that time, we've sent our notice, certified mail. They don't pick it up. That's three weeks. Four, it comes back to us.
I know.
And then, five days, we'll post our yard. We got to wait another five days.
I know.
Then I can send public properties to mow it. So it's, it's a month if they don't pick up their letter. So.
Six weeks.
And we're, yeah, sometimes even more.
It's six weeks if they don't pick up their letter. And they know they don't have to pick up their letter.
Correct. I do have those that they will not pick it up. And they may mow the day we go to mow it. So, yeah, it's, uh, it's frustrating, but we're kind of bound by the statutes that there's not a lot we can do with it. Um, zoning, uh, Rob kind of turned zoning over to Erin. Um, but we initiate most of the stuff. We do the, the zoning verifications, uh, administrative subdivisions. We'll do the paperwork, collect the fees, start the stuff, make sure everything's right, push that over to Erin for her planning and zoning committee to take action on that stuff. Um, I'll move into, um, our building permits. Um, we tend to average about five hundred a year, um, but you'll see twenty-two, we processed two thousand twenty-three, uh, building permits, ninety percent of that being roofs. So, um, we won't see that again. Um, twenty-two, um, this was as of May.
I'm not on the wood.
Yeah, yeah. Um, but we're a little higher now than five sixty-nine for twenty-two. As of today, we're at seven hundred and five permits. So we're still catching the stragglers on the roofing from last year.
Chet, on the building permits, uh, years ago, we used to have a lot of problems with people just going out and building and not getting real permits. It's kind of fell off. But driving around town, I've noticed there's been some construction decks and fences. And they're supposed to post that, uh, in a window or something to where you can see that there has been a.
They're supposed to. We tell them to stick this in your front window till you're done, but in one ear, out the other.
So, uh, do you guys ever check those? I mean, you drive by, you see somebody throwing up a deck and.
Yeah.
Put it on your computer and say, well.
Yeah, we, we have mobile, uh, iPads. I can, we can run through and we can check a permit.
You wish you stopped, uh?
We will stop work, um, send them a notice that they're working without a permit. And usually they'll hustle right in and get it. I mean, we, we do have contractors and things that'll roll in in the weekend, do a project and gone. We won't know they're there. Or homeowners too, that, and we'll, we'll go out the next week and say, oh, there's a deck. That wasn't there before. But, um, for code enforcement.
Yes.
Um, we tend to run over a thousand cases a year. Um, this kind of twenty-two, our, our code enforcement fell off, obviously, because we're dealing with, with all the permits and roof inspections that we were, we were having to do. Um, and this year, Nick was at seven hundred and thirty cases as of today. Um, we've had a prolonged weed season because of timely inches of rain over the summer. So the weeds have just kept going and going. We have three seasons. Uh, we have weed season, then you've got snow season. Um, and when we, in the fall, leaves fall off. We tend to move towards junk vehicles and more of the, the junk in the yards, uh, because leaves are gone, we can see stuff. During the summer, foliage hides everything. Um, so we'll shift from weeds to more junk vehicles and junk. So that, that's coming up here as soon as we, we finish up here with, uh, weed season. I know if you drive around, you've noticed a lot of new construction. So, um, people are still investing in the community. Um, obviously, the new school is, whether you like it or not, is still moving along pretty well. Um, Covered Bridge, we have a new, uh, townhome going up. Um, Troy Cook is putting up a new townhome, and I think he has plans to do the other side of this building too, with another one as soon as this one's complete. Hydose with their new, uh, their new gas station is moving along pretty quickly over there. And then we have our Go Car Wash, uh, which they have recently competed, completed. Um, they've got their certificate of occupancy. Um, we're just waiting for them to hire staff and open up so they can start washing cars. So, um, uh, some of our code stuff, I mean, we're not all weeds and junk vehicles. Um, we also deal with, with life safety issues, um, out of our International Property Maintenance Code. Um, this deals with, with hoarders, lack of drinking, water sanitation, that kind of stuff when we, when we are, are made aware of it. Um, this was a case, we had a, um, a gentleman living in this home. He had no water, no running water, no s, no, uh, no toilet, no working electricity, or he had electricity, but he didn't have heat. His furnace didn't work. Um, severe hoarding. In that picture, I'm standing on top of the kitchen table. It's level with the junk. But, um, so we deal with those things. Um, obviously, uh, repairmen that aren't very good at what they do. Carpet is not a permitted roofing material. Um, so, you know, we, we see stuff. Um, I never say I have seen everything. Uh, the citizens will surprise you. It's the first time I had seen a car on its side in a, in a driveway. Um, so.
A lot easier to work on the bottom of it.
Question the city. Um, a few before and afters. This particular one, we had a, we had a complaint about this. It was an ongoing complaint with this, this foliage growing along the street. Um, the lady complained, complained and complained. Um, so finally, I just, I took one of, uh, public properties kids and, and he and I went out and just shaved this thing to the ground. Um, and the lady came in the next day. I thought, boy, I'm going to get an attaboy, clean that up. Thanks. Uh, she was not happy. It looks worse than it did before. So, uh, it's a thankless job. This is one of our jobs we did February of twenty-two. We took forty tons off of this property. Um, so.
Looks that way.
And we're, we're ready to go again.
Yeah, we're ready to go again. Phone calls I'm getting on that one. And it looks worse than that.
Some future product, projects for us. We, we're, uh, we'll have twenty-twenty-one ICC codes upcoming. So we're working on the twenty-fifteens right now. So we're eight years in on this. So it's, we'll be reviewing codes and, and, uh, getting those in to get, uh, adopted. Um, Dempster's Clean Up, um, obviously, we, um, you know, that's, that's kind of the elephant in the town. Um, we are going to be tearing down one of the buildings here, hopefully, in the near future. Um, one of the buildings has begun to collapse. We still have a lot of, um, people running around in there, playing around, kids playing around, thieves stealing stuff, whatever's left. Um, we'll be looking at doing some new zoning regulations, updates and stuff at some point. Um, one of our main complaints on zoning side right now is people living in campers. Um, uh, it's difficult for us to prove because we, we can't, I don't have the resources to stake out campers and, and, and watch if, if people are in them constantly. Um, parking in front yards, um, putting a little more teeth into the, into parking in your yards, um, as well as owner occupied home repair program. Um, we're kind of working with SEND right now. They, they kind of help, uh, lower income homeowners repair their homes. But I'm, I'm looking to move, hopefully a little, a little bit away from, from demolishing everything that comes along, if it can be repaired, to help these people, um, to repair their houses back to a code compliant condition and keep them in their homes without having to, to kick them out and, and tear their house down. Um, pipe dream down the, down the road, maybe a rental inspection. Um, we have a lot of substandard rental houses in town that, that, uh, we don't have access to. People don't, you know, they, they don't want to complain. They don't want to get We have a lot of substandard rental houses in town that, that we don't have access to, people don't, you know, they, they don't want to complain, they don't want to get kicked out or, or face retribution from landlords, so. We know there's bad ones out there and there's, so sometime down the road, maybe something that we can, maybe need a committee to look into how we work on that, so. That's, that's us in a nutshell.
Well, I'll just say, you guys got a thankless job and you're kind of like, some people think about going to the dentist, when you arrive, it's gonna be painful. But we appreciate what you guys do, it's not easy.
Yeah, it's, uh, it's challenging, but you know, it's, it's what it is. It's necessary.
And I got three new properties, I'll be down later than we.
I'll warn Nick.
Chad, so we had, at the end of last year, we had some unused funds for building demolitions. Doesn't, it doesn't strike me that we should, that we should ever, I tried to put more in the budget for this, but, I mean, is that a, is that a manpower thing? Is that, because obviously, me driving around or walking around.
Again, last year was a weird year with, with all the, the roofing inspections and permitting and stuff, we, we were so busy with, with construction stuff. And then with Rob leaving, yeah, we had a little bit of, of funds left over. I, I do have, I've got two houses set to go, they were gonna go until this Dempsters project came up. When this kind of became an emergency that we needed to get down, so that's gonna eat the remainder of my budget for this year, but I have two lined up. And I do have some garages and some other properties that we're looking at, so we'll.
Well, I am just gonna suggest to you that never let your lack of budget funds for demolitions stop you. If you ever need more demolitions funds for any project, you won't get a no vote from anyone on this council. I can almost guarantee that. Can't speak for everybody, but I've never had anybody say, huh, let's, let's don't keep cleaning up the community, so. If you need more money, please just come back.
Understood.
Tobias didn't want to hear that, but I thought I'd sit there, I thought I'd say that while he's sitting here listening, so.
Understood. Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Chad.
Why you have a garden, Chad?
Keeps me sane.
Okay, next is Beatrice Community Food Pantry Update.
Thanks Bob, thank you for putting this on the agenda, it's really, uh, a thank you and just a short discussion. The construction phase of that facility downstairs is completed. We moved the eighth and ninth of this month, we reopened on the tenth, we had an open house on the twenty-fifth. Thank you, those people that were able to make it, I think you'd be proud of it, the way it looks. The people worked very hard there, we have forty-five volunteers that work there, we have fifteen board members, so there's sixty people that work there every single month, it is a big operation. And we're gonna set new records, I know, this year because we have a huge influx of people coming to our community right now, and we'll be somewhere between six and seven thousand families that we're gonna serve this year. Which is a big number, I think. I'd be a little bit remiss if I just didn't at least say thank you generally to all the contractors that we had, the subcontractors, people that donated their time, their effort, their supplies, their expertise. And honestly, I'd be really remiss if I didn't mention Marvin Guston's name. Marvin came out of the blue and just offered to be our general contractor there, I didn't have to. He said I twisted his arm a little more than I remember twisting his arm, but he, as close as his accounting department and I could guess. He put in somewhere between six hundred and six hundred and fifty hours of his time down there, and I don't know what contractors make nowadays, but that is a big number that he donated, and he did it, and he put up with me a, a lot of the time on all these roofs and floors and doors and everything else, so, I'm not the, you know I'm not the most patient person in the world, so, so he also put up with, with me every single day. Anyway, I, I just wanted to thank you for your insight in voting for that, and if you haven't taken the time to go down there, please do, take five minutes and go down. You know, they're open every Monday and Thursday, and the last week of the month, they're also open on Tuesdays because that's usually when people are running out of money and food. So just take five minutes, go down and look at it, I think you'll be proud of it also, thanks Mayor.
Thank you very much. Okay, last item on the agenda is a discussion on proposed utility rate increase.
I brought this up at the last council meeting, and just so everybody knows, whatever we decide to do or not do, it's gonna go to the Board of Public Works. We know what those people's job are, and I'm not trying to go around them at all, but when we looked at the budget and some of the things. I would want us to consider raising, I'm not wanting to raise the per kilowatt hour, not per gallon on the water, and the sewer follows the water. I'm not proposing to raise those rates. What I'm proposing to do, and I think we did it last in twenty twenty-one, didn't we Tobias, on the, the surcharge?
The last time we raised rates on water was, I believe, twenty twenty-two and on wastewater twenty twenty-three and electric twenty fifteen.
Okay, so if we look at the inflation since twenty fifteen, it's about twenty-nine to thirty percent because it compounds. And if you, and if we don't ever raise these things a little bit as we go along, you know what's gonna happen at some point? I know we've got a lot of money in reserves, but I just think that we want to consider keeping up on this stuff. Every time we buy a transformer, all that kind of stuff, and I remember Ted, when we did that sewer project at Fourteenth and Lincoln, that was about an eighty thousand dollar project. And all this, these raises would go right back to the departments that are gonna charge if we, if we get it. I just think, and it would total up to, with the commercial residential, it looks like it'd total up about two hundred and forty-one thousand a year. It's something that we can budget because we know that's a fixed cost, so it's easier to budget it, we don't have to have any guesswork whatsoever, it's not like if you raise electric rate. And by not raising, by doing it this way, not raising the, the utility rates. It doesn't give a hardship or cause any grief, shouldn't, to any industry that wants to come in, or any business, or anything like that, so that's why I would be for adding that to the surcharge, I would propose, oh, and I got these numbers, Tobias helped me with this, and I appreciate that. On residential, today it's two dollars a month, I would propose raising the residential to a buck fifty a month. I think that's what we said, wasn't it Tobias, or was it a dollar?
You talked about raising commercial.
Oh, commercial was.
A dollar fifty, raising residential one dollar.
Yeah, and I think that would be a good thing, it would take a lot, care of a lot of these smaller projects. We've had some small waterline projects, things like that, and I think it would help us pay for some of those, and it's not enough that I think it would be too much of a hardship on anybody. So I would like us to consider that, and if Tobias will take that to the Board of Public Works for us, and see what they think of it, I think that, I think it would be a good thing.
Right, so really what you're talking about is the infrastructure fee and not the rate, correct?
Yeah, the rates, we don't want, I wouldn't want to mess with the rates. We, although we do have the cheapest, as we know, we, our electricity's really cheap, but I think we need to keep up on some of these. Everything we buy, all the taxes we pay, our food costs, all that's went up, astronomical just in the last three years especially. But if, I don't think it's, would be a very true statement to say that all this stuff's gonna go back down. I think the prices that were set by this, although whether real or artificially set, we're kind of stuck with them. So I think if we, we need to keep up with that, and I don't think we've probably done that too much. And it's not our fault, the inflation and all that has went up, but the cost of living has went up, and if we don't raise our costs somewhat along with that. At some point in time, that margin's gonna go from both ends and we might be in a little trouble. And it's not a lot of money, but it'll raise us some pretty good funds.
I don't disagree with Gary, but there is one thing that, this infrastructure improvement like for water and sewer, we have a two dollar, you know, for water and a five dollar for sewer. I really don't think those are fair with lower income people. People are making more money, they're paying two dollars, you know, for their home, they, they might be using a lot more water or sewer than other people, you know, we, we do a flat fee. I think the, you know, the people with lower incomes are paying the same amount as people that are using a lot more water, you know, in a home that's five thousand square feet compared to a thousand square feet. Sprinkler systems, things like that, they're, they're paying, you know, you know, the two dollar, you know, the infrastructure, and on the, on the sewer, they're paying the five dollar. You know, you know, so I think maybe we can look at changing all this to maybe some type of a, you know, a percentage thing here. You know, instead of just a flat fee, I don't know if that's possible, but, you know, you know, just doing something like that. And the other thing is, is, again, I don't disagree with Gary, but on six twenty-two of twenty-three, on Ask the Mayor. You, you were talking about recycling and you were asked about possible rate increases, and you said fixed income people don't need a two to three dollar tacked on to their bill. And I totally agree with you, Mayor. Because you, people do get hurt, that's why I'm saying, you know, maybe if we look at doing a percentage here that might, you know, help the lower end people not pay as much on these infrastructure fees as somebody that has a bigger home and uses more water, more sewer, more electricity.
How would you find out how much somebody was making, each household in town to make it a percentage?
I'm talking about their homes.
I know, you're talking about a percentage increase, different ones for different income people, how would you ever determine that? You gonna have everybody show you their tax returns?
No, I'm talking about the size of your home too, if you're talking and living in a five thousand square foot home and somebody's living in a thousand square foot home, they're gonna use a lot less water, you can look at their water bill, you can look at their electricity. How much they're using, we have those rates, I mean, we, that's how we bill people. By the amount of water they use, by the amount of electricity they use, you know, and things like this. I just think we're, you know, you know, and I know it's, it's hard to imagine and stuff, but it's the same, the same thing though where. And I don't disagree with what you're trying to do, Gary, I don't disagree with that a bit. But, you know, I just think that, you know, charging everybody the same fee when other people use more of that than somebody else, I don't think is right.
Well, the more water they use, the more that, the more cost.
Correct.
Correct.
Everybody pays the same amount per gallon, per kilowatt hour, that's all, those costs are all fixed for everybody. How would you decide who got, who got one or not?
Seven dollars on somebody that's making, that's living in a thousand square foot making, you know, minimum wage, is a lot more burden than somebody making two hundred and some thousand dollars a year.
But again, you're guessing what somebody's income is?
Ted? The simplest solution that Gary would provide is just a rate increase, the more you use, the more you pay. So, but we've frozen what we're doing, so. What Gary's proposing is, is that the flat rate is, and, you know, we have people that have meters that don't use anything, you know, they're, you know, they're just having, it's just on. That no one lives there, or they're gone six months a year, or they don't, you know, they don't winter here or anything. I, I can certainly sympathize with what you're saying, Duane, but what you're suggesting is a rate increase and nobody here has voted for a rate increase, so I, I think at this point, I don't, I don't know if I would vote for this, Gary, I, you know, my, my own personal opinion is the other utilities. I, I think a little, that the electrical department could, could fund all of these. A little bit like the football program at Nebraska, it funds all the other sports, you know, so that would be part of my discussion. I'm saying, I welcome the discussion, send it back to the Board of, Board of Public Works, let them chew on it, give it to us, because it's, we have the ultimate vote, but. I'm, I'm not gonna vote for a rate increase because all the departments have a cash surplus, and, and I don't think we need it, it's not, it's been, not been suggested that we need it. But I will definitely consider the flat rate increase, so, but I think it's a good time for discussion for it, so, that's where I'm at with it.
Volleyball team had ninety-two thousand people for the game.
They, they still, they still don't generate, and the basketball team too, so.
Any other discussion, I think you're right, we'll take this back to the Board of Public Works for them to take a look at and, and give us a recommendation.
Very good.
All right, the next regular city council meeting is September eighteenth at twenty twenty-three. Please note, it will be at four P M, it will not be at seven. It will be right here at the Business, Beatrice Public School Administrative Building. There also will be a special meeting on September twenty-ninth at twelve P M in the City Hall Conference Room. This is for the purpose of approving the final claims for twenty twenty-three so we can get all of our bills paid prior to September thirty. With that, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
I move the meeting be adjourned at eight twenty-five P M.
Second. All in favor? This is eight zero, have a good night.